Good evening. Before we get started, I'd like everyone to know that we're having some difficulty with the streaming of this meeting. It will be recorded and posted later, but it may not be available in real time. I now call the Board of Education Regular Meeting and Work Session to order at 5:35 PM. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for Monday, July 22, 2024? The Board of Education Regular Meeting and Work Session as set forth, and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
I move to approve the agenda for Monday, July 22, 2024. The Board of Education Regular Meeting and Work Session as set forth, and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second? Second, this is a roll call vote.
Dr. Roundtree.
Aye.
Dr. Porchardine.
Aye.
Dr. Kaminsky.
Aye.
Dr. Humbles.
Aye.
Dr. Byers.
Aye.
Dr. Newman.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. We have one public hearing tonight. This is for the issuance not to exceed $30 million in school infrastructure, sales services, and use tax revenue bonds in one or more series. Secretary Reesstrom, have we received any written correspondence?
No.
Have there been any requests to address the board this evening regarding this published hearing?
No.
Thank you. The issuance not to exceed $30 million in school infrastructure, sales services, and use tax revenue bonds in one or more public series, in one or more series, public hearing is now closed. Have there been requests to address the board this evening regarding? Are there any requests to address the board this evening?
Yes, there are two.
Two, okay. With two speakers this evening, you'll be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Reesstrom will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. If you have submitted a request to the board and choose to refrain from speaking in the interest of equality and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. To abide by the open meetings law, there will mean, there will be no dialogue between board directors and the public during this time except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. The board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speakers that the board cannot address personnel and student matters. The board policy outlines a process for addressing and resolving concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speakers to state their names and addresses when called to the podium. Ryan, please call our first speaker.
Rob Cole, and he'll be speaking about Garfield.
Excuse me, sir.
Okay, so can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna start over. My name's Rob Cole. I live at 252 25th Street Drive Southeast in Cedar Rapids. And looking at the presentation on June 24th and the actual contract for the sale of Garfield, I think there are some differences between what was presented and what's in the actual contract. And those differences are big enough that I think it needs the board's attention. I actually don't know what to do about it, but I think the board needs to look at it. So what was presented in that June 24th meeting? There was, there was a statement that said this, this contract has a cash value that's greater than the assessed value of the building. And so the assessed value is like 379, 700. We do know that there's a $160,000 cash portion, which leaves that 10-year rental unit or the two rental units for the remaining like 219,000, which to the break-even point is about, I think, 915 a month for those two rental units. So the first thing is that's based on an estimate. What was explained in that meeting was not an estimate. It said, you know, this, this has a cash value that's greater than the combined assessed value. You know, nowhere in there it said it was an estimate. It's not the biggest problem unless the estimate's off. And I believe the estimate is actually off for two reasons. One, that estimate was based on two-bedroom apartments, which is assumption, is, is an assumption that I don't, well, actually, I know it's not in the contract. So that's a big assumption that I don't think we can, we can make. It doesn't say it's in the, there's nothing in the contract that says it's a two-bedroom apartment. There's kind of an incentive on the seller to not have two-bedroom apartments. Because we, we know there's going to be 18 to 20 units. He's got an incentive to basically rent out the worst two of the units because they're renting for free. So I don't think we can make the assumption that these are going to be two-bedroom apartments. The other problem with the estimate is that it was, it was basically done by taking comparisons to three existing rental places and taking average of the three. The three that were used in this estimate are Cedar River Bluffs that was renting for 1350 a month, Pheasant Run, which is renting for 935, and then Overlooked 380, which was renting for, for 910 a month. So Cedar River Bluffs was renting for a couple, like 400, more than $400, more than the other two. The problem with using that one as a comparison is it has some amenities that the other two don't have. What it has is for each of these two-bedroom apartments, it has a second bedroom or a second bathroom. It's also got a private patio, a gym, and the biggest one is underground heated parking that we know Garfield won't have. And it definitely won't have a patio either because, you know, we, we know that no changes are going to be made to the, the outside of Garfield. So these amenities, I believe, are overstating the estimated cash value. So when you take all these together, I think the estimate should be revised. And when you do that, it's going to end up meaning the cash value of this contract is actually far below, well, I should say it's below, and I believe it's going to be far below what the actual assessed value is. So don't know what to do about it. Just wanted to tell you all this. Basically, I think the estimate's wrong. Any questions? 50 seconds left, if you've got questions. All right, thanks.
Katie Dunbar.
Hello, my name is Dr. Katie Dunbar, and I am a physician in this community. I live at 1356 Timberlake Court on the southeast side of Cedar Rapids. I am here on behalf of my family and myself to express our dismay regarding how a close family member was recently treated by the Cedar Rapids School District. In 1967, our uncle was part of the first student class to attend Kennedy High School. In the 1970s, our mother and father graduated from Kennedy. In the early 2000s, my brother and I also attended and graduated from Kennedy High School. We have spent our childhoods growing up in the CR schools and have continued to be a part of the Cedar Rapids Community Schools, not only today, but for over the past 50 years. Our uncle taught and coached at Jefferson until his retirement. Our grandmother served for many years as a registered nurse with a CRCSD until she retired. Our aunt worked in food and nutrition for numerous years until retirement. My brother started his adult professional career in the Cedar Rapids Schools, beginning as a summer worker in 2007. He went on to work as a custodian, warehouse worker, substitute paraprofessional, substitute teacher, then finally, an IJ teacher at Washington High School. Our family has been steadfast supporters of the Cedar Rapids Schools until now. Our family member has worked for the school district for his entire adult life. He began as a custodian, was promoted to custodian grounds supervisor, manager of custodians and grounds, associate director of human resources, then again, manager of custodians and grounds. Further, he has managed Kingston Stadium for over 20 years, spending much of his free time there, making sure the stadium is in great shape. He was there when the old district was downtown on Second Avenue. He worked endlessly for you during the flood of 2008, when the district was dozens of portables just north of Kingston Stadium. He is dedicated and works tirelessly to get to where he is today and to provide for his family. After 50 years of dedicated service, he was planning on retiring next year. Yet, on a random Tuesday afternoon, he was ambushed by district brass. He was advised that his 50 years, 49 years in a month, to be precise, of faithful and unwavering service to the CR schools was ending in a few weeks. This occurred just weeks after his management contract was renewed for the 2024-2025 school year. He has dedicated his life to the Cedar Rapids School District. He has given back thousands of hours of vacation time over the years, refusing to be away from his job. Apparently, loyalty and dedication means nothing to the district. Instead of letting him retire with dignity, he is ending his over a half-century career with a kick out the door. Shame on the district. It did not used to be this way. People used to be treated with respect. People used to be valued. Clearly, that is not the case with this administration. He is more concerned about being present to make sure some new school opens smoothly and not about his own needs and feelings. Needless to say, he is unaware the contents of this letter and that I am here this evening. You all probably do not care, but we will not be sending our sons and daughter to the CRCSD anymore. We will make sure people know how the CR schools treat their employees, especially the ones who have spent half a century dedicating their lives to it. Thank you for listening. Our hope is that CRCSD in the future treat all employees with dignity and respect as they have prior to the new administration. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now give the meeting over to Dr. Grover to share her superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, President Garlock. First, I'd like to take a point of privilege just to introduce a couple of new team players that we have here. I wasn't quite sure if both of them were at our last meeting. I think some were here, but I don't think I introduced. So we have Orshoya Syper, who is our new chief data officer. So welcome, even a way, thank you. And then we also have Mara Hopson, who will be our new chief of schools for Area 1, which is the feeder pattern to Washington High School. Thank you. As I get into the report here tonight, let's see. Let's start off with our collaboration that was recently formed to help address the food insecurity within the community after the First Avenue Hy-Vee closure. Through partnerships with local organizations and government officials, the Cedar Rapids Community School District has launched a program to provide free breakfast and lunch to community members, no matter their age. For years and years, the school district has provided meals for students. And now with contributions and collaboration from the Lynn County Board of Supervisors and leadership from Representative Sammy Shees and also support from the city of Cedar Rapids, we were able to offer these meals to anyone. And breakfast is served from 8 o'clock AM to 9 o'clock AM. And this is Monday through Friday, so we want to help make sure that we spread the word. And lunch will be served from 11 o'clock to 12:30. For the adults, they are free to just pick up their meals and they can take them with them, or they do have locations at the school where they can enjoy their meals on-site. Just want to say thank you to all of the partners for making this possible as we think about the impacts of food insecurity, but also. But I would also like to take the opportunity to thank our nutritional services department and all of the departments that provide us support to get this up and running within a matter of days after being asked to be a part of providing food for our community. With that being said, we also have other meal locations as well, where we have free meals for students of all ages. And you can go to our website to find out more information about those additional locations. Also, earlier today, the Mercy Medical Center, Mount Mercy University, and the Katherine McCollie Center held this annual Circle the City with Mercy event. For this year's event, volunteers packed 11,000 meals and 200 hygiene kits that the donations will ensure all students have access to proper nutrition and hygiene items, setting the stage for academic success. We're grateful for the Mercy medical support and look forward to the positive impact this gift will have for our students. We do have a couple of new principal announcements here. We would like to announce a couple of changes to our middle school administrative team for the upcoming school year. We have Jocelyn Hannah, who is the current principal at Erskine Elementary. She has been appointed as the new principal of McKinley Steam Academy. So I want to say a special thank you to Jocelyn for all of her flexibility and adaptability. She was at McKinley before, and when we had a vacancy, she stepped up to the plate and went over to Erskine to help provide them with leadership. And now she has the opportunity to return to McKinley. Also, want to say congratulations to Matthew Jenkins, who is making a transition over to support leadership there as the associate principal. And with Colleen Fegeman going as the associate principal to Wilson Middle School. Also, just want to provide a little bit of an update to the board of directors as well as our community about the progress with the Harrison-Madison Project. On May 13th of this year, we had a work session to discuss the results of our community survey. And during that discussion, the board, you wanted us to prepare some alternative proposals. Just want you to know that our team that we have been working on those proposals, we've been in contact with the architects, and they are finalizing a budget. And they have taken into consideration just how we think about the classroom spaces and any other considerations that would ensure that we have the state-of-the-art learning facility, or whatever the recommendations might be. We look to bring a formal recommendation and report, I believe, in August to the board. Just want to keep you updated that progress is happening. And this is my favorite announcement here for our families, that annual verification started on July 1st. This is a quick reminder to all of our Cedar Rapids Community School District's families. This is important for us to complete the annual verification so that we make sure that we have everything set up for your student for success for the upcoming school year. You can complete this annual verification process in our parent portal. It is required every year. We want to also make sure that parents that you go in and check and make sure that you've updated in addresses, telephone numbers as well, that allows us to make sure that we have accurate information throughout the school year. And some fun things here, just some back-to-school. I believe school supply lists are available. It's hard to believe that the first day of school is just, is it 32 days away? Check the math, maybe. We start on August the 23rd is the first day of school. So please continue to watch our social media platforms as well as our websites for updates or relevant information to start this school year strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. I do just want to call out the, the meal program that's been established at Johnson Steam Academy. It took some collaboration between the district and the county and the city, but we were able to pull that together in a relatively quick, quick amount of time to serve the families in that neighborhood. I know some of our board members have been over there to support what's happening, and we're just really proud of, of the work that that team has put together. Do we have any other board reports tonight? Okay. Let's move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items the director would like to pull for comment, question, or separate vote?
President Garlock, I would like to pull the personnel report for a separate comment, action, or vote.
Okay, just the personnel report, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to remove the personnel report from the consent, consent agenda for a separate vote?
Sumo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we are going to vote on the consent agenda minus the personnel report first. This is, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the personnel report?
Sumo.
Second?
Second.
Perfect, this is a roll call vote.
Director Porchardine.
Aye.
Director Kaminsky.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. Do we have a motion to approve the personnel report? Do we have a motion?
Sumo.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Was there a comment? No, I just need to abstain. You just need to abstain, okay.
Oh, okay.
It's a roll call vote.
Director Kaminsky.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Porchardine.
Abstain.
And President Garlock.
Aye. We have two items tonight for board governance. First, we will discuss our priorities for the 2025 legislative session based on the Iowa Association of School Board priorities. Director Porchardine, it is all yours.
Thank you. First, I want to thank my fellow board members. We had 100% participation in locating our ISB priorities. These will be shared to ISB, Iowa Association of School Boards, as long with the same, as long with priorities elevated from other districts. Based on a compilation of feedback from all of the districts, ISB will set their legislative platform. The top five areas that Cedar Rapids Community School District located as legislative priorities are preschool, early literacy, mental health, local accountability and decision-making, and supplemental safety. That's all I have.
Comments or questions for Director Porchardine? Thank you. Our second item to discuss is the Urban Education Network 2025 Legislative Priorities, and I have those. The Urban Education Network is a consortium of the 24 largest school districts in the state. We have unique challenges and opportunities because of our size and the composition of our population. So we, this was done a little bit differently. We were given a list of legislative priorities, and we were to score them from one to seven, seven being the most important. These will all be submitted back to UEN, but we have ranked ordered them just to give the public a little taste of what, again, we feel is most important to our district. The, the most important for this board was district authority or home rule, followed by mental health, adequate school funding, quality preschool, opposing school choice and ESA expansion, literacy, high school programming, et cetera. So those results will be submitted to UEN this week, and the UEN will come up with their legislative priorities based from input from the 24 districts. Questions or comments? We have three items under administration tonight. The first is to approve insurance coverage. Before doing so, Carla will speak to the board.
Good evening, board of directors. What I would like to take the time to point out tonight is mostly on page three and four of the insurance packet. And so, starting in, on July 1st of 2024, the wind-hail deductible for all of our buildings through EMC is at 1% of the value. And so, our insurance agent diligently worked and got us quotes to do a buy-down. We used to be able to buy down our deductibles. Last year, we bought down to $10,000. And because of all the wind-hail damage that has been happening across the country and across the state of Iowa, the insurance market to buy these deductibles down to that amount was significant. So we did end up buying our wind-hail deductibles down on 12 of our highest buildings, which is on page four of the packet, to $150,000. The total of that deductible is $1.8 million. The total at 1% would be $5.8 million. So we were able to buy down to, for, buy down $4 million. The total for all of our buildings at 1% deductible is $8.1 million. And we're buying that down to $4 million. This is a significant amount of money for the district. And because of that, the district will start in FY '26 to set aside a reserve for our wind-hail deductible and build a balance over the next several years so that we can have the funds in reserve for that deductible. We had a $52 million claim at Cedar Rapids when the derachio went through, which also, that claim is presented when we try to do buy-downs. And so that hopefully will drop off next year if they only ask for three years of claim history. And we should be able to get our deductibles, hopefully, our buy-down lower. This is, this is affecting all districts across the state who use EMC, the EMC insurance pool. And so I've talked to a lot of the UEN districts, and we will be grouping together to see what we can do with EMC to get our deductibles lower. Any questions?
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Do we have a motion to approve annual renewal insurance coverages paid from management fund sources, including property casualty liability and workers' compensation insurance 2024-2025 fiscal year?
Sumo.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Porchardine.
Aye.
Director Kaminsky.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. The second item is to approve the resolution to proceed with issuance of school infrastructure, sales services, and use tax revenue bonds, authorizing and setting parameters for sale of bonds, approving use of official statements, approving bond purchase agreements, and taking additional action. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the resolution to proceed with issuance of school infrastructure, sales, service, and use tax revenue bonds, authorizing and setting parameters for sales of bonds, approving use of official statements, approving bond purchase agreements, and taking additional action thereon.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Porchardine.
Aye.
Director Kaminsky.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. The third item tonight is a presentation by Chad Schumacher, Director of Operations, and he's providing us with an update on the Future Ready Facilities Plan. Chad, it's all yours.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me talk with you this evening about our Future Ready Facilities Plan. As you know, we're working with Shive Hattery to develop our long-term facilities plan and to walk us through the work that it's going to take to get us to that end goal. The, the goal of developing a Future Ready Facilities Plan is addressing our building's needs across the district through 2040 and beyond. The purpose of having a Future Ready Facilities Plan is to address our aging buildings. When we look at our aging buildings, we tend to see that our antiquated infrastructure starts to become a problem, and it becomes fiscally irresponsible for us to continue to support those infrastructures. We definitely want to be fiscally responsible. Our current inventory is not conducive to the spending that we're putting into it, and so we need to take a look at that as well. And then providing the equitable educational experiences across the district, whether it's a remodel or a new building. We want to try to guarantee that our kids have a, a like experience in the classrooms in those buildings. The factors that we want to consider when we're taking a look at our infrastructure are the current and future demographics. We'll take a look at that tonight. There's population increases and decreases across our district. We have to make sure that we're taking a look at all of those different factors in considering what building upgrades or building renovations that we make. The curriculum programming that we have with. The curriculum programming that we have within those buildings, and how can our infrastructure help support that curriculum and programming in those buildings? What is being taught in the buildings, and how does that infrastructure support those things? It's important to take a look at that. Our community needs and partnerships, we also want to take a look at that as well. How can updated facilities support our community and the programming that our community needs to be successful? So, as you're aware, we, we had the elementary plan in 2018, and we also asked our voters to support a bond referendum in 2023, and we called that the middle school and high school plan. We're also currently working on our college and career readiness programming. And at this time, we really want to take a look and try to merge those, those plans into one Future Ready Facilities Plan. We want to look at projects and the needs that address along the continuum and the different buckets of money that go into updating our facilities. So, as we take a look at our long-term Future Ready Facilities Plan, we really want to make sure that's all one single plan. As you know, this image isn't new to anyone. The buckets of money that we use to support our facilities are save money. That's the one cent option sales tax, as we've talked about in the past. Our PEPAL money, the physical plant equipment levy, which will be up for renewal in September. And then the GO bond or the GEO bond money that we will ask the voters to support in November of '25. It's important also to look at the history of our buildings and when they were built. This is a graphic that kind of shows along continuum, starting in 1914 with the construction of Arthur. And you can see the cluster of buildings through 1914 through 1930, and those buildings that were built there at that time. Harrison Building was built in 1930. It was actually pretty interesting because the Great Depression hit, but the original Harrison had burnt down, and we had secured our insurance money right before the Great Depression hit. So, we were actually building Harrison Elementary during the Great Depression and offering jobs to people in the Cedar Rapids area. But you can see that there was a lull in any kind of upgrades to our facilities there from 1930 all the way up to 1948. And then you can see the cluster of buildings that we built within our district. That obviously was for the baby boomers that were coming through, and our, my grandparents and great-grandparents made a dedication to making sure that we had the correct facilities for our students at that time. After our last building in 1973, Taylor was built. We had, again, a long period of time where we did not do any new buildings within our district. In the year 2000, finishing in 2002, Viola Gibson was our next new building in our district. And then you can see there that after that, it was 2021, '22, and then 2024, this August, we'll open Trailside. It's also important to point out how we have been fiscally responsible with our taxpayers' money. You can see that in the middle there, that orange, that orange bar there is our tax rates for fiscal year '25. Right now, we are at $13.90 per $1,000 assessed value. That, and then all these other bars are the other school districts within Lynn County. You can see Cedar Rapids School District is the lowest tax rate inland county. And even if we do, even if those voters do support a renewal of PEPAL, we will have a non-tax increase with the renewal of PEPAL, and we will still maintain the lowest tax rate inland county. So, when we talk about providing equitable educational experiences across the district, we're talking about a couple of different case studies right now. These are pictures from Van Buren. Van Buren right now is seeing a really big increase, and we'll talk about the population increase or the student increase here in a minute, but they're seeing a huge increase in student enrollment right now. What we've had to do is build these temporary walls within some of the learning spaces to accommodate six ELL teachers in one classroom and some other Title I teachers in another classroom. So, we're being creative, but we are running out of space at Van Buren. At Hoover, we're going to introduce some portable classrooms at Hoover Elementary because of, again, the space needs and the increase in students within that, within that school. Not only are we seeing more students, but we're also seeing some needs that we need to address as well, from ELL to Title I and other, other things. So, when we talk about providing equitable educational experiences, our new schools like Maple Grove, the first two pictures there, and then that's an aerial shot of Trailside that's going to open. You can see quite the difference between Van Buren and Hoover and all the other older schools and the newer schools that we're building within our district. Where are the students coming from at Van Buren and Hoover? So, this is a map of the development that's going on within our district right now. The green boxes represents new building developments that are happening right now. The purple boxes, I'm sorry, the yellow boxes represent potential developments in the next five years, and the purple boxes represent developments in the next 10 years or beyond. So, when we take a look at that, again, the color is representing now, five years and 10 years and beyond. If you take a look at Van Buren and you take a look at their growth right now, there's 359 units, potential units being built right now. What is a unit? It's a house, a single dwelling house or a multifamily apartment condo. So, right now, there's about 359 units being built in Van Buren. That equates to about 45 kids coming out of those, those units. We average 13.4 kids per, per 100 single-family units or 10.2 students out of 100 multifamily units. So, that's kind of how the math works out. But if you go across to the totals, you can see West Willow has a potential of adding 579 students over the next 15 or so years. West Willow is a building that has 600 kids. Van Buren has a potential of adding 93 kids over the next five to 10 years. And then Hoover up here, you can see it has a potential of adding 24 more kids. So, we do have a situation where we have a little bit of a pocket of population growth right now in that area. This is the current enrollment or past enrollment of the last four years for Hoover and Van Buren. You can see that it's gradually going up. We had a little bit of a drop in '22, '23 for Van Buren, but it's going up as we go through our enrollment. And Principal Stone will be able to talk a little bit more about their enrollment here in a second. So, I'm going to have him come up and just give you a little brief information about Hoover.
First and foremost, thank you to the board, directors, for giving me the opportunity to speak about Hoover tonight. It's a subject near and dear to my heart. My name is Clint Stone. I'm the principal at Hoover Community School. I've been the principal this fall, will be 13 years, and it'll be my 20th year in the district, just a little bit of background. Our growth over the past few years has really provided the opportunity to serve even more families with our community school model, which has been really exciting and something we've really pushed for the last few years. However, it has led to some challenges regarding space and the number of students in our classrooms. For example, last year, we had six ELL teachers that were supporting almost half of our students throughout the course of the day in one classroom. We also had large class sizes and multiple grades, including, as an example, our kindergartens, where we had 27 to 28 students at the end of the year. Fortunately, for the upcoming '24-'25 school year, we've been able to add three additional class sizes. And as Chad alluded to, we'll be adding portable classrooms to the outside, which will help us to alleviate a little bit of the class size issue. That'll help with some of the crowding and make it easier for some of our amazing staff to really meet the needs of all of our kids. At Hoover, last year, over 90% of our kids qualified for free reduced lunch status, and nearly half of our students receive ELL services. So, the opportunity to have manageable class sizes really makes a difference in terms of our staff's ability to meet the needs of all of our kids and to make sure that they're reaching their full potential. As we continue to look forward, having a new facility to support our community would really address our continued growth while also providing a chance to support our work as a community-based school. Our students will benefit from an updated and modern learning facility that will also support the work of our staff and continue to meet the needs of our students. This will also provide us an opportunity to continue to showcase what a community-based school can do to impact our families and our surrounding community. In addition to our parent classes, our monthly resource center, our daily onsite support for families with a wide range of needs, and additional opportunities that we offer as a community-based school, a new facility would also help us to increase the support that we can provide to support our community as a whole. We would be able to continue to expand our key community partnerships while also addressing the needs that have been identified for our families as part of our shared leadership models at community-based school at Hoover. I'm really excited about what a new facility could mean for our families and the potential to have a greater impact on our community as a whole as well. I appreciate your time and consideration and would always love to talk to you more about Hoover if you would like to at any given time. Thank you so much for your time this evening. I appreciate it.
Amy Evans, the principal at Van Buren is in Canada visiting family, but she recorded this for us before she left, so I'm going to attempt to play that for you.
Hi, Amy Evans. I'm fully here. Sorry that I can't be here tonight with you, but I'm excited to be able to share with you a little bit about the Van Buren story. Over the last couple of years, we have seen a large increase in our student enrollment. Now, while welcoming over 100 new students to our building was exciting, it did pose a lot of challenges for us. Our hallways are full, and we are this year very fortunate to get to add three more classroom sections. However, we didn't have room for three more classroom sections. So, I appreciate the creative way that the district has helped us reimagine our learning spaces. We've added walls to several of our classroom areas to provide collaborative spaces for our support teachers. One example of that is that our six ELL teachers this year will be in one room. Almost 200 of our students will go through the ELL room each day receiving their instruction. Another example of an area where our 450 kids have a hard time fitting together is in the gym. We were not able to do full assemblies last year as a collaborative, excited Van Buren charter group, as the gym is simply not big enough to fit all of us. We also had challenges in the cafeteria. In January, we had to renew our schedule so that we were able to find eating areas for all of our students for lunch. We love having everyone at Van Buren, and unfortunately, in May, we had to close enrollment and send any new students to Cleveland as there was just no more room for them in our building. What we are asking is that you consider Van Buren property as a site for a new school. A new school would give us the ability to service all of our students in a modern environment that will provide them the very best learning spaces they can have. Thank you for your consideration.
So, that is the recommendation that we bring to you tonight, is to consider a new elementary at Van Buren and Hoover for the success of our students within our district. If you were to support this, we would be able to get an architect on board as soon as possible, start the, the design phase, start construction in December 2025, around that time, and open those two buildings in August of '27. As we look at, how would we pay for that? We are going to use the money from the SAVE buckets, the one cent option sales tax. And so, that would not have a huge impact on our future facilities plan as we go, go forward. We do need to take into consideration other, other things as well. The academies and pathways have started. We're using some SAVE and PEPAL money for that as well. Van Buren and Hoover could start, and then obviously, we were going to bring a recommendation for Harrison to you next month. So, after we are able to address those three items, then we would continue to work with Shive Hattery and get a long-term Future Ready Facilities Plan in place and make sure we have identified the projects across the district that would allow us to address the needs with all of our facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. I think your presentation shows us that equity is not necessarily being accomplished right now, particularly at Van Buren. I don't, I don't think you need a background in education to understand that putting six teachers in one classroom is not the best learning environment. So, I appreciate you bringing this information to us. I, I just really want our kids to have the very best. And it seems apparent that we need to give some attention to Hoover and Van Buren. So, board members, I'll open it up to you for question or comment.
I have a comment. I just, I appreciate the insight and the flexibility in being responsive to needs as they arise. I guess my question is, when we originally started with elementaries, we had that phased approach, and I really commend this board for building in that pause in between phases. Do you have like a pathway of how this affects what schools were listed for the next phase? And just being able to like update that so that we can send that message to the community again?
Sure. And I, I do have it mapped out, how all of the elementaries would be addressed and staying true to that plan that was developed in 2018. Obviously, the, the pause that was put into place within that plan allows us to address issues as they come up. And so, this, obviously, this population increase in these, this part of the city is something that we had to address. But the long-term plan is to address all of our elementaries and to continue with that. I didn't bring that information tonight, but I can sure provide that. It's on my whiteboard in my office. But I can, I can definitely provide that if needed.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all the work you've done. I know, Chad, that you've spent so much time reimagining and rethinking ways that we can, you know, solve some of these challenges with increased enrollment and for all the work that you've done to support the families and community. Clint, we appreciate that. Can you help us paint a larger picture of how those classes is compared to other classes in the district so we can understand the need?
Sure. So, we, and Clint, you can jump in here too, because you probably have the numbers in your head, but let me. So, right now, we have, at Hoover, we have 26 classrooms, like physical classrooms. And we also have then 20 grade level classes, so K through 5. We have 20 grade level classes. Correct me if I'm wrong in this. But then we have an arts, music, a success center, a Title I classroom, so that, and then level one and two, level two classrooms in music. So, that actually ends up being about 31 space needs. And then those class sizes, as far as the number of kids in the class sizes.
Director Byers, your question was about class sizes. I can't say specifically compared to the other buildings, because I don't have that information for me. I can't tell you. Last year, we had multiple grade levels where it was about 27, 20 kids in a classroom, particularly at an at-risk building that provides additional challenges for us, which is part of the reason why adding three sections this year allows us to get our average class sizes for the most part will be around 21, 22 kids per class this fall, which is certainly much more sustainable long-term. In terms of long-term growth, I've been there a long time. When I first started Hoover, I think we had 14 sections, and it was up to 15, then 16. Last year was 17. And obviously, as we've addressed, next year is up to 20. So, I think part of it is certainly the growth around the Hoover community, but also, as Chad alluded to, Van Buren, but then also the growth in direction of direction of challenges. The other side of West Willow, in terms of what that would mean for some of the students at Hoover, like at the apartments on 16th Avenue that originally were part of Hoover, moved to West Willow when they had some boundary changes, and I would assume that some of the students then would be able to come back to Hoover and be part of that. So, West Willow would allow, be allowed the growth that they need with increased population over the next five to 10 years, while we would still have this capacity and space for the students who'd be returning in addition. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would say that, and the chief can speak to this as well, but our target is typically on those lower K1 is more of a 21 per, per grade level. And then we get into, like, our target would be like 25 kids per classroom at those other grade levels. Is that an accurate statement? So, that's our goal. It fluctuates depending on what building you're in. And again, I think it's important to understand that we have kind of a unique situation because we have some areas of our district that are seeing some shrinking enrollment, and that poses its own concerns. But then, this is a unique situation that we have some population increase. And, and the, the maps that I showed you shows that it's not going to, it's not a short-term thing. It's going to continue to grow in those areas.
And I think one, one thing to maybe add there to, Chad, I don't know if you want to speak to this. The growth element is critical because as the families move, move into those attendance zones, they look to go to those schools, and at this point, they're already full. So, we can't even take any more students there. And I think that's what we want to be able to honor, the class size. And I think that's what we want to be able to honor, the class size expectations or caps that we have put out for our teachers, and when we have the families, and we really don't have anywhere for them to go within close proximity. So it's important, not only for now, but into the future as we, and thank you all so much for doing your research, working with the city officials to understand the growth that is coming to the area so that we can be prepared.
Yeah, we've sat down with the city to confirm our demographic numbers, we've sat down with Haywatha, we've also reached out to Barbara Hames, Hames Homes, and talked to her, she's got another development that she's going to start to build in that same area. So we feel really strong and confident in our numbers and our data on the population there. And as Clint alluded to as well, the ability to build both Hoover and Van Buren allows us to have flexibility within that whole quadrant to be able to address future growth with West Willow and either Maple Grove.
I was, I had a question for you, Clint. When it comes to the portables, does that seem to be a preferred option? I know that they've explored walls and other things, is that a preferred option for educators?
I would not say that's a preferred option for educators.
Of all the options, I guess?
I'd be happy to put you in touch with them. I think it's preferable to having 35 kids in a classroom. Realistically, had we not, I think, I don't want to speak for Chad, but I think they had a little more flexibility in terms of adding walls. We were already at capacity, we don't have the ability to build walls to put six teachers in, because we already had six teachers in. So we'll be, it allows us to move some classrooms out there, and it's a great short-term solution, but I would not say that's their worst choice.
Of the options that exist, but no, I agree with, and I just, you know, this directly impacts student learning and the well-being of our educators, so I'm glad to hear that we have a short-term option, but excited about the opportunity to prioritize.
I do want to point out, we are utilizing the portables that are on Van Buren for classes, so there will be two third-grader, third-grade classes in the portables at Van Buren. So we had a portable already there, so it's kind of a mixture of what Clint's already kind of alluded to, that they, Clint was already living with multiple teachers in a classroom, so they're both getting, both options, I guess, is important to understand.
Can you speak a little bit to the cost of the portables? Did we have these portables previously, or did we need to purchase them?
These, we did own the portables, luckily we had them during the dome, the dome issue, dome gates, if you will. So we do own those, but it still takes a significant amount of money to move them and to set them up, and to make sure that they're flush, you know, we have to have flushing stools and water and electrical and all that. So there's a significant cost to that, but it would have been a lot more if we had to purchase those for sure. And that's part of the reason why we didn't add additional portables to Van Buren at this time.
Thank you. Director Humbles.
My question at Van Buren, you're building walls, what's the capacity size for those rooms now? Are they adequate space for our students?
Sure, and I should clarify that the rooms that we're putting walls in are for more of the pull-out support, like ELL, so a teacher might have a small cohort of kids with them, so five to six at a table teaching a language, so it's not a classroom of 25 kids per se. So I should, thank you for clarifying that, because that's, that does seem a little bad that we're putting a whole classroom there. So yeah, it's more the pull-out support services that we're utilizing that model with.
Okay, thank you.
But going back to the challenge, some of these are happening simultaneously, so some of the students are, they're both, they're teaching in different segments of the room at separate times.
Yeah, Amy said that 300, I think she said 300, well, maybe more than that, but there's a large population of her students are, partake in the ELL services, and so you could have all six teachers having their ELL services happen at the same time.
So, right, even though it's not a class of, six classes of 25, it's still difficult to teach.
Yep.
Six different lesson plans, yeah.
I do only, I would say, sorry, that, and Van Buren and Hoover have pretty similar demographics in a lot of, a lot of ways. When we had six ELL teachers in a room, they were all teaching in the same room at the same time with all of their own groups of five or six kids, so they have their own space, but you're also learning, speaking online, so you should be speaking a lot, obviously. So I mean, the ability to learn effectively with a lot of that many adults and kids in a room is obviously not fantastic.
Yeah, not ideal. Director Newman?
Question from down here in Siberia. Are we looking at 600 student attendance centers?
Yeah, both buildings would be a 600 student attendance center, yes.
And just to follow up to that, is that going to be enough ultimately for that side of town, or are we going to have to shuffle some things around ultimately to get it dispersed kind of evenly across that area?
Sure, so looking at all the data that we have, we feel confident that Hoover, where they're situated, that would be good for them, they could help pull from West Willow. The long-term elementary plan that we have, again, the long-term plan for the elementaries within our future-ready facilities plan is that we do have grants sitting there as well, that we have kind of options as well, and then we would want to look at Cleveland and Taylor and how that all plays into it. So there's, there's a lot of different things that can go into that, but for the immediate need right now, this would address the long-term needs in that area.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just real quick, if I can, how often do we get these projections, the projections that you're sharing? Like, how often are they updated?
Carla, can you help me with that? Every year?
Yeah, I think it'd be good for us to see that as a board, right? I don't know how often we get to see it, but to be able to get those updates, you know, as they're changing. And then maybe one last question is, on the timeline, obviously, the next step is for you to come forward with, with the recommendation, but is that timeline that you're putting forward, is that aggressive, or is that pretty conservative right now?
If we're able to, if you guys were to vote on that and approve that, we can get an architect onboard, it's not, I would say it's average. It's the timeline to do the design and build, that is about what it takes. It takes about 18 months to build an elementary, and then it takes a little bit, less than a year to do the programming.
So when it says construction progress, August 2027, that, that would be the beginning of the construction project, progress?
It would be the end, yeah. The opening of the buildings would be August of 2027.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Chad and Clint. That concludes the administration portion of the meeting. We are now going to take a 10-minute recess to set up for a work session. Is there a motion for a recess?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We'll reconvene at 6:42. The time is 6:49, and we are now entering the work session. Tonight's work session will be facilitated by the Safety Task Force along with Westwind, but first, we are going to turn it over to Dr. Grover.
Wonderful, thank you so much, President Garlock. I just wanted to take an opportunity, as we begin the work session here tonight, to give a heartfelt gratitude to the Board of Education. Thank you all so much for your support, not just in words, but in your significant financial support, but also your charge for leadership for us to understand safety and security within our school district. Just want to maybe give a little bit of a timeline here in regards to, back in May of 2023, we had the opportunity for a member of our Board of Directors to be with our high school students and our principals to understand safety within the schools. That conversation kind of started with our school resource officers. I applaud the board for really thinking about how we look at a very comprehensive approach to supporting our students. At that time, in the summer of 2023, we were able to bring on Janessa Carr as our Safe and Secure Learning Coordinator at the time, and just shortly after that, we talked about, who do we engage in order to bring our community together so that they could be a part of this process? So we definitely want to say thank you to the Safety Advisory Council. They have about 26 members, and here is, I guess, just the thing that impresses me the most about this group, they kind of just took it on their own, they didn't care if we were there or not, they kept meeting, and they met twice a month. That is a huge commitment. Would you all just pause for a moment just to give them a round of applause? I know that they are here in the audience tonight, but that is huge, many in a volunteer capacity to spend that amount of time, so it really speaks to their dedication. And tonight, so I'm going to be able to turn it over to them so that they can share about their work, their findings, but moreover, just some of their thoughts and recommendations in how we continue to ensure that we have a safe and secure learning environment for all of our students here in Cedar Rapids Community School District.
Check, check.
Good evening, my name is Janessa Carr, and I'm the Safe and Secure Learning Environment Manager for the school district. I am pleased to be here with members of our Safety Advisory Council to share some of our draft strategic plan recommendations. I originally convened the Safety Advisory Council last fall and facilitated the first meetings until the district put out a RFP for a facilitator and project manager in January. Out of that RFP process, we hired Westwind Education Policy to facilitate the council, and I was able to engage directly in the nitty-gritty of the council deliberations. We have 26 members on our Safety Advisory Council representing many different facets of our community. We have school district employees, building-level employees, we have different partners such as Kids First Law Center present, Foundation Two represented on the council tenure, we have other agencies such as Lynn County Public Health, parents who were originally invited, and community partners such as Wellington Heights Community Church, Prairie Woods, Children of Promise, and our local GBI program. I want to point out, before we get into our recommendations, that just how important this work is and how complex it is, and just how there's no quick fix when we're talking about improving safety in our school district, in that this, when we present these recommendations, it's really going to take the commitment of all stakeholders, so everyone here in the room, our community, and all school staff. So today, we are presenting draft recommendations that we hope to get feedback on. Four of us from the Safety Advisory Council will share in a brief presentation. Each of us will introduce ourselves as we speak, and there were, like we said before, there are several other Advisory Council members here in the audience, and they will be joining you guys in our small group discussions. So before we get started, I wanted to get the chance to talk a little bit about some of my work from this school year, and then talk about some of the work moving forward, so for the '24, '25 school year. So like we said, one of our huge wins was just the development of the Safety Advisory Council, being able to get building crisis kits into every single one of our school buildings, our information sharing meetings, which was a collaboration between CRPD and Foundation Two, we met twice a week, our safety re-entry meeting, so making sure that kids are transitioning back into buildings after a harm has been done or a safety concern has been, has happened, being able to push into buildings and have safety roundtables with buildings when they have concerns about different safety protocols, being active and being a part of that emergency response, of working hand-in-hand with CRPD when we experience a school threat, a Crisis Go implementation coming up this fall, being able to get in front of some of our staff groups and do ACES one-on-one training, so adverse childhood experiences, and being able to give them that refresher, something that we really need every single year. And another huge success was that Stand Up For Peace collaboration, which was a partnership between CRCSD, Lynn County Public Health, Foundation Two, and the Cedar Rapids Police Department. So during National Youth Violence Prevention Week, we piloted some things, moved into a few schools, and talked to kids about what nonviolence is, they sign peace pledges, and starting this fall, we'll be pushing into each of the middle schools and starting Stand Up For Peace groups. And those specific middle school groups will have 25 students who will be identified, students who are at risk for group violence affiliation. Moving on to the other plans for this year, we'll be starting formal threat assessment, so when a student makes a threat, we will have a district-level team come around the table and being able to assess that threat, gather information, and be able to tell whether that's a low threat, medium threat, or a high-level threat. Continued trainings for social media and online safety, we're finding that a lot of our safety issues are starting online, a lot of kids are posting things online and threats are beginning online, it's not always in person. We'll be revamping our Run, Hide, Fight training, which is something that all of our district staff should be getting, and we will be making sure that each, all of our students know what to do in the event of an active shooter, and so making sure that we have grade-level and developmentally appropriate curriculum for Run, Hide, Fight, and our police pow curriculum will be updated as well for this school year. I will be joining the Student Services Department this school year, will be blending with Riles Parker, Chris Gibson, and some Kim Abram, and pushing into buildings once a month to support them in the area of behavior and safety and social-emotional learning. Still continuing conversations about a possible middle school alternative program, once again, just a conversation. We'll be doing once a month, family engagement events surrounding some of our really heavy topics, so social media would be one, in helping parents to understand, how do we, how do they monitor social media? What are ways to be able to monitor their children's phones, and just becoming more involved in that way. So a different safety topic every single month. Safety Advisory Council will still be going on this upcoming school year, and then our, what's formerly known as our district hearings, our district reviews, will be beginning district restorative conferences. And I will pass that on to Cersei.
Thank you so much, I'm Cersei Stumbo, I am president of Westwind Education Policy. I'm really pleased to be with you tonight, and I just have to say that, that energy and the speed and the precision with which Janessa Carr has been doing work this past year is what set the stage for the Advisory Council, we've been trying to catch up to her the whole time, and indeed, meeting twice a month, and even extending the amount of time meeting together, really because of the model that's been set and the impressive work being done. We're trying to make sure we kind of can, can hold up this end of the bargain, so it's been a pleasure to do that work. I am, as I mentioned, president of Westwind Education Policy, we are, we work all over the country, leadership and professional development and policy analysis, but we're headquartered right here in Cedar Rapids. I myself moved into Cedar Rapids in January from Marion, very excited to be living now here in the district and getting to work at home, it's a unique pleasure for us. We were founded in 2001, when I returned back to Eastern Iowa after spending 14 years in Washington DC doing policy work. So we're thrilled to get to do this work, our mission is centered on supporting schools and school leaders to imagine and enact systems that overcome historic and persistent inequities and engage each and every child in learning. This work that you are doing is centered deeply in learning as well as safety and security, so it's right up our alley, and we are pleased to have been able to support the Safety Advisory Council. You can see they've been reviewing district data, they've been talking through findings of interviews and focus groups, we'll share a little bit about what we were able to do this spring, but also looking at the interviews and focus groups that have been conducted in the recent past, because that information is still important and valid, and then looking at the peer-reviewed research, scanning the literature in the media to see what is happening, and creating networks with other similar school districts to find out how they are approaching these burgeoning issues around safety and security. So we're excited, we will have everyone introduce you themselves when they come in to the breakouts. So I think we're going to switch to the next slide and invite our next person.
Hi, I'm Chad Zabel, associate principal, currently at Franklin Middle School, beginning my 32nd year in the district, 15 years teaching at Jefferson, 15 years as an associate principal there at the high school level, and now this is in my second year at the middle school level, they're different levels. 11-year-olds are very different than 17-year-olds, as you guys might realize. I was one of two building-level administrators on the Safety Advisory Council. I just, I mean, with my longevity in the district, and I also went to school here, my wife went to school here, we were both graduates of Cedar Rapids Schools, children graduated here as well. So the work that I appreciate just from everybody involved in this, taking this very seriously, taking this, you know, obviously, the goals that we have set out in terms of decreasing fighting and physical aggression, decreasing weapons in schools, reducing disproportionality by race, IEP, English language proficiency and behavior infractions, and obviously creating a safe and secure learning environment, those are big goals. But I think we can have impact, and I think the time we've spent and the feedback we're looking at from you guys to refocus that even better with the recommendations, I think is good. We appreciate you giving us the time to share with you and allowing you to represent our folks, to give us feedback, so we're looking forward to that. folks, to give us feedback, so we're looking forward to that.
Hi, everyone. My name is Angel Ramirez. I serve as a peace facilitator through Kids First Law Center, working within McKinley STEM Academy and Metro High School. My professional expertise lies within equitable and restorative practices and policy. I've spent the last few years at both schools being able to work alongside students in restorative circles, doing proactive classroom circles, as well as individual student and student conflict resolution. I work with the staff within each of the buildings that I work within to bring restorative practices into their everyday classrooms and everyday work, as well as working with building administrators and support staff in how they best support their, their staff and students in an equitable and restorative way. I, it's safe to say I live and breathe that work and take it very seriously, even beyond Kids First. And part of the reason why I was not only willing but excited to join the Safety Advisory Council was because of Janessa and the other Safety Advisory Council leadership, and really setting a track record of that equity work that I hold near and dear. So with this lens in mind, I could confidently say that the Safety Advisory Council has continuously worked to address the diverse needs and lived experiences of community members within the district, all while putting evidence-based approaches at the forefront of the solutions that we've proposed to you today. And as we kind of set the stage for the rest of the presentation and the small groups, I really want to emphasize that this is very complex work, and it's also continuous work that we will strive to be able to achieve over the long term. The scale and complexity of the issues faced by the constituents within the district are both a challenge and an opportunity for our team to be able to come to the board and the community with recommendations that are meaningful, impactful, effective, and equity-based. We believe we have struck a balance of, of those things that represents both the complexity of the issues and also making sure that it's not too overwhelming, the considerations that we've proposed to you today. Thank you.
Okay, so as we are ready to dig in, we thought we should really start by setting some context. Where we in Cedar Rapids are facing unique challenges and opportunities, but they are also mirrored in other schools and districts across the country in a lot of very important ways. And so we're just going to try to walk quickly through some national, district, state, and local context to set the stage, because it's, it's really important, I think, to understand that while folks are feeling passionate about their experiences and their experiences of their children and their community members in Cedar Rapids, we're seeing concerns around things like school shootings, bullying and harassment, particularly in an age of social media, a deepening understanding of the ways that both historical and persistent trauma impact youth and adults in systems like schools, deepening understandings of the ways that students will experience school differently based on social identities, and that that can really impact different kinds of experiences and outcomes, and a growing and deepening, broadening awareness of that and the equity-related concerns that come with that. And then, as Angel noted, the disruptions that came out of the pandemic of not only the ways that schools operate, but also in the relationships that students have to authority, the ways that they've been able to engage in different kinds of learning and teaching environments create a context that is unique in this time for trying to understand and, and think about things like chronic absenteeism, which is a concern all over the country, interruptions in learning progressions, and those kinds of things that we're still sorting out as a nation. All of that really is very important to know, that with all of these disruptions, we also are deepening our understandings of healing-centered engagement, understanding different ways to shift the narrative, to create really asset-based ways of understanding our conditions and our contexts and our students and our staff. So there's this beauty in the midst of this challenge all over the country, and you've got all that going on here. And on top of that, you've had the lasting effect of the derecho. I'm still facing this in our backyard here. You've had real loss and change in leadership positions over the last few years that are meaningful and important, very real social media threats, gun violence in the community, which is not something the community is familiar with, if you will, a tragic school shooting in a neighboring community here in Iowa, and a consent agreement with the Department of Justice that gives some clarity but also creates some confusion, and it's a change that is significant. So on top of everything we're facing as a nation, you have these added, frankly, challenges that are, that are being felt throughout the system. And so they did set the stage for the interviews and focus groups we did this spring. You should have a very large PDF document in front of you that's 60 pages-ish, which gives you some of the rationale and background supporting the recommendations themselves, which is in the smaller document. So on page three, you can see some information about the interviews and focus groups. We don't want to focus too much on that, but we do want to acknowledge and honor the 168 people who talked to us about what they were experiencing as staff and school leaders across the districts in their reviews and focus groups, where we really heard a lot about strengths in individual classrooms, in schools, in district office, a lot of appreciation for one another, a lot of commitments to kids and to communities, but we also heard a very palpable sense of overwhelm, as you can imagine with all of this on top of one another, the need for clearer understanding of district priorities and values and the work ahead, quite practically, some confusion about the district's approach to student behavior management, a genuine desire for professional development and to receive support, and then a bit of a lack of clarity regarding how to engage parents and families and caregivers in the work of schools and schooling. So it's, it's a complicated bundle of needs and opportunities, challenges and concerns that the Safety Advisory Council was getting their hands around just over the last few months around thinking about how these complex contextual factors which blend and reinforce and are in opposition to one another, creating this fascinating context that allowed them to really think hard about what are the priorities? What are the really powerful things that could be done at a policy level, at a practice level, that could make significant change for everyone in the system, for your students primarily, but also for your staff and your families and your broader community? So we're really pleased that they were able to boil down some recommendations coming to you as drafts, because we're really seeking your feedback and input. Janessa?
So our plan for this work session will consist of, consist of us presenting five draft recommendations for implementing components of the strategic plan. We're going to break into a small group and do a gallery walk discussion, and then we're going to return to the large group for our report outs. Hopefully, this will give us direction for really what the next steps will be. We will reconvene as a council on August 14th, and then we will be delivering the final recommendations after your input on August 22nd. So some questions to ponder over, as you were going to each of the strategic plan recommendations that will be listed on the walls, will be, are the recommendations at the right grain size for the board and the superintendent? Is there any other background information that you might need to know? Or is there enough, is there enough background information? And then what are your initial reactions? And do you feel that the recommendations are impactful and feasible?
And just give a quick overview of the recommendations as you're going to be walking around, taking a look at them. Recommendation number one is to adopt and use guiding principles to inform decision-making around safe and secure learning environments. So we had 10 guiding principles that our Safety Advisory Council used, and those are listed and explained on page five of the recommendations, and then also on page nine of the background PDF. The proposed guiding principles for safe and secure learning environments provide shared language and expectations for all levels of the district. After adoption, a standard step in all district decision-making processes from the classroom to the boardroom would be to review each guiding principle to determine if and how the principle aligns with the decision. There are several steps to implement this recommendation with immediate, short, medium, and long-term benchmarks and indicators, and those are found on page six of the recommendations, the smaller packet. And then, our, our objective was to identify important considerations with these guiding principles that all staff, students, and the community could rely on the school district to consider as decisions are made throughout the district. Really, the kind of, the bedrock of where the decision-making is about safe and secure learning environments. That was recommendation number one.
Just to quickly explain the documents you have, because there's a bunch of them. There is the draft recommendations themselves, which is the shorter document, and it has the recommendation and then some suggested actions and some criteria for measuring implementation. And then the PDF document, on the bottom right-hand corner has PDF page one. That is probably easier to follow, because it, it's a compilation of several documents with different page numbers. So when we say PDF page one, that means this bigger document is what we're referring to.
So recommendation two is to develop a restoration and discipline matrix along with guidance for how to reduce disproportionality and use professional judgment. The full timeline and text is on page seven of the recommendations document, and the rationale for this recommendation is on PDF page 26 of the background PDF. We just want to emphasize that this, and serve as a reminder that this is not, this recommendation is not for the immediate change of policy or adoption of a specific matrix. You'll find some examples in your background PDF, rather than simply starting the process to develop a matrix utilizing input from community partners, district staff, students, families alike. And then consequently, the, the implementation of the pilot metric, matrix would then happen further along in the process.
Okay, so recommendation three, I'm going to do three, four, and five, because they sort of kind of bundle together in a way. Recommendation three is about coherence, and you'll see the, this on page 10 of the smaller recommendations document, and the rationale is on page, PDF page 51. Really, the key here is that the sense of overwhelm that we heard from folks is not only about sort of fear of safety and security, but it's also about all of the things that are on the plate for all educators across the country, as we're understanding more and more and needing and expecting more and more from our schools. So the, the key way to begin ensuring we don't continue to add to that overwhelm is to ensure there's coherence across the district. So while we might look at safety on the one hand, security on another hand, learning environments on another hand, which is you can now start to think about instructional practice, you can start to think about all other sorts of programs and initiatives that are going to be necessary to implement the other initiatives in your strategic plan, it's really important we get those connected and coherent. They really are, we believe, in looking them over. There, there are a lot of fundamental ideas that we actually believe the guiding principles that the Safety Advisory Council has put forward will mesh well with the other initiatives, but if there's not a concerted effort to make sure everyone knows how they mesh and they connect together, it can feel like one more thing on the plate. So that recommendation three is really about coherence and ensuring across the entire district. And then recommendation four takes us to professional development, which is sort of hand in hand, as, as the district is ensuring coherence, we also want to make sure that folks get the kinds of supports they need in order to deeply understand the connectedness across initiatives and the ways and the practices that everyone in the system can engage in in order to implement and ultimately achieve the goals of the strategic plan related. So the high-quality professional development that is needed is needed across all initiatives. So someone providing PD around mathematics instruction needs to understand the core concepts of a secure and safe learning environment. And so helping to make sure that the PD providers also see those connections is a recommendation number five. And then, or four, and then recommendation number five is to develop and implement multidirectional communication. So you've got some new communication staff, we're really excited to get to work with your developing department, if you will, of data and communication. A key here is that, that the communication plans need to be multidirectional. One of the things we've heard in the interviews and focus groups is a need to be kind of rebuilding some trust and some confidence in one another, and we do that not only by talking at people, but by talking with people and listening. And these are the sorts of things we see from your leaders on the staff level. It needs to be extended and deepened and very intentional. So a multidirectional communication plan will ensure that, having heard from so many folks in the district over the spring to develop these recommendations, you're also going back and working with folks to work on implementation and continuous improvement. And so it's not just a unidirectional top-down, but rather really a collaborative process of change and improvement.
Okay, so now we will be breaking up into our small groups. I believe we will, we will do five, five groups? Are we doing four groups now? So we're doing four groups? Okay, so looks like six groups. If you look over here, you can find your name, and then you will find the poster that has the number that relates with your, with your name.
So what we'll do is we'll have eight minutes, so we're going to do stations. We'll start, a, a group is going to start, number one, we'll start with recommendation one over here, and have eight minutes to talk about that recommendation. We have post-it notes or markers and pens, you can just write directly on the sheet, comments that you have as you're engaging in your conversation. Group number two is going to start with recommendation two. Group number three will do recommendations three, four, and five together. We'll have eight minutes. Sam's going to call time, Sam Black, our co-facilitator over here. At eight minutes, you're going to rotate. So group one goes to two, two goes to three, three, four, five goes over to one. All right, we'll do that over there, and then apologies, my group is group sit four. We're going to be over here, group four, five, and six. And we'll do the same, we'll have eight minutes and then we'll rotate. Okay? And we'll get it going. All right, Sam?
Yes?
Yes. That would be, if, if that works, that'd be great. Where it, it's a, it's an excellent boardroom, little bit of a challenge as a classroom. Just for a sense of timing, we are about one minute into this. Not trying to create a sense of urgency. Yes. So a bit of the background you're going to find on one level in the ten guiding principles that the advisory committee recommends. The other part of the background of the framework is going to exist in the sixty-four page document that actually provides a little bit of detail, a little bit of scope, some certainly some, some hearing references to look at these sort of disorders. And there's some parallels here that we pulled from business for these things in terms of effectiveness. And but by the same token, there are also a number of things that are pulled directly from education. When systems have to pivot, shift, and redesign themselves is, you're right, it's a big lift. It's hard to work in a present. It can be done here, but it, it's a big lift. So we've got a little more than four minutes. Yes, so this is one cluster. For reference sake, we're about at the four-minute mark. Another component that is definitely that the advisory council addressed is a desire to design recognition for folk as they demonstrate and practice the guiding principles, the framework, and adherence to the goodness and this sort of thing. And also recognizing those collaborations that take place in terms of decision-making at various levels within the school district. Ladies and gentlemen, two minutes. There are several very important first priority efforts taking place in the school district now. This work by design intends to, if you will, build bridges and make such more silos so that there's more collaboration and crosswork. And, and that as people step into a new initiative or a new project, we understand, okay, this is the framework that's going to take place. And if there's ultimately communication and collaboration with each group. But as you mentioned earlier, it's a big lift. Forty-five seconds. Apologize for the interruption, but good people, it is time to shift. Thank you for shifting. So two went over there. You, so you were at three, four, or five, so then come to one, please. Starting the clock for the next eight minutes. So we're, we're going, we were at three, four, or five, we've gone to one. It may be. No argument there at all. What we offer is, what we hope is, a broad enough range to consider the possibilities. And then for the school board and the school leadership to determine which are the principles that are most important and most germane to the needs of the district now. Ten is a lot. How do you develop a checklist to make sure you cover ten things if you're not part of the federal government? Ten, ten can be cumbersome and tedious. By the same token, the advisory council felt it important to present as wide a range as would be necessary to assist the school board in making the decisions it needs to make about which principles. We, we didn't want to leave obvious things out or leave things out that may resonate with board members. Yes. Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, we are just about at the four-minute mark. We're at the two-minute mark. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to ask you to shift to your third rotation. Please shift to your third rotation. All right. This, this is a one. Yep. He does look nice. He looks like a boss. No, you didn't. When you said, I've been in thirty-two years, everybody said, no time to give. Excuse me, how long have you been there?
Five.
All right. So, Madam President, we have the luxury of having Jenny Schultz here to assist. Well, there are. Weapons, those things that were in the strategic plan, the specific behaviors. Yes, thank you. And that's precisely right. There's a slew of research that shows that the more we use exclusionary practices, then we increase absenteeism overall, we decrease educational attainment, we decrease the likelihood of graduation, and we and we disengage kids from school. So, you know, this, you know, we are... I can't speak to what it is that teachers deal with on a day-to-day basis, but I do believe that if we have to address the behavior, it takes time. We have a little less than four minutes. We are at the two-minute mark. Two-minute mark. This is two. So, there's a one, two, and three in each space. We're down, we're under one. Thirty seconds. Five, four, three, two. Thank you, everyone. So, if we could have you retake your seats. We can't be here all night. All right. So, could I have one person from each group go back to your respective cluster of posters to report out? Where you ended. So, we're gonna have one person from each group go back to your respective station where you ended for a report out. Okay, now, I want to honor and respect the time of everyone in the room, so I'm gonna also ask, beg for some cooperation here. Please. Thank you. All right. So, just kind of going around the room, let's start with... Trish, do you mind if we start with you at one here? All right, can we?
Now, you're not gonna get it back. Okay, oh, so our, we had recommendation, we ended at recommendation number one about our adopting our guiding principles. So, some initial reactions from the sheet would be how the guiding principles really need to exist outside of the school walls and how this is coordinated with outside organizations and agencies. And then, could there be a possibility of a peer group that meets regularly? A question that was asked was, who developed the guiding principles and why? We need a statement clarifying the purpose and the genesis of the guiding principles, which will be tied back to the pillars and the vision of the district. One of the state, or one of the initial reactions is to simplify, simplify, simplify. Often in PBIS, we have three to five expectations for students so that they're easily to remember, or they're easy to remember. Maybe we can adopt that for our guiding principles, three to five guiding principles, and then that way it's constantly up front in staff minds. And how does this connect, this important work connect to the daily practice in classrooms and eventually trickles down to students? And then, how are we going to build it into the, weave it into the culture of the school? When we talk about grain size, how can we be sure to include data in these principles?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Excellent observations. Some of the answers to your questions are in the sixty-four-page background and information. Well, there's no shortcuts here, folks. It's, you know, that's a reality that we're facing. So, it's there. The rest of it is some of our thrust. How do we coordinate, synthesize, support this work in everyday use? So, Jenny, can I ask you to talk to, talk about recommendation two?
Yes, this is the matrix. So, just in general, summary, some comments. Looks like we've had a request for administration and families to receive training on restorative practices, to have a better understanding of what it is, to make sure that there is consistency across buildings and implementation. And, and our group also talked about that transition from elementary to middle school, from middle school to high school, and building on the learning for particular students that schools gained when they had that student at their school, so people don't have to start over. And then, we talked about the importance of looking at data to see, you know, how schools are implementing it and what's working. And then, there was just a note about complying with Iowa law, which speaks to my sweet spot, so of course, we would make sure it does that.
Thank you, thank you so much, recur. I don't know that it's a theme yet, because we only have two points of connection, but I did hear the word data in both. Okay, so, we want to make decisions that make sense. Chad, if you would, please, talk about three, four, and five.
I won't be able to synthesize this very well, but I'll do my best. The big things in here were common language and consistency was, was highlighted. I think we agree with that, and that's why we're talking about coherence across the district in the recommendation. And that high quality and responsive professional development would be making sure of that coherence and consistency in common language. That would certainly produce that high quality that we're looking for. Feasibility was a question, and teacher time has to be connected, protected. And so, we talked about how do we embed this learning with, you know, initiatives like instructional empowerment. One of the suggestions here, it looks like another group talked about, that they kind of wanted this. Number four, providing high quality and responsive professional development to create and maintain safe and secure learning environments to be the number-one thing that we look at, that that's where we start before we start getting into matrices. And, but it's actually how do we in the classrooms first start that, that training, equipping? Like, our teachers are dealing with this already. It's not like this is something new. Oh, my goodness. Like, but how do we get common language in the classroom? So, so it's not just feeling like we're supported maybe by administration or the board, but we're supporting class to class as well, that we have similar practices and similar language as we work with kids throughout. And then, let's see here. Again, again, some of this was, I think, acknowledging that the communication is so important again in front of everyone, multiple, multidirectional is also really important. So, they kind of, they agreed that the five recommendations were all crucial and foundational. So, thanks. That's good feedback. Question about representation on our, our advisory council was also satisfied with an answer of yes. Okay, all right, if that makes some sense.
Chad, I appreciate that. Maybe another recurring theme here, the need to stress professional development? Yes. Ah, yes. All right. So, we have three points here, data. So, yes, and also professional development emerging. Speaks to the health and vitality of this district and any district in the country in so many ways. I'm thinking retention, I'm thinking about the, the culture, the atmosphere, the rigor that we can introduce here as a result of having folks that are supported as ardently as we can. Mr. Tominski, would you please?
Thank you, sir. I have how many minutes left? This kid. Yeah, right. So, I'm just the second one to go on, on recommendation one. So, it's the adopt and use guiding principles to inform decision-making around safe and secure learning environments. I think the first thing that we felt was like ten, right off the bat, kind of feels like a lot, might be overwhelming to some people. Possible to maybe consolidate them was part of the discussion, but the reality is that every one of them is important. So, spending some time with them, understanding why they're there, but maybe looking at the order that they're presented, some of the terms that are used, like restorative, you know, it tends to mean different things to different people. So, spending the time to actually educate everybody on precisely what that means and why it's there, but to start thinking about maybe the order in which they're presented and just the amount of time it's gonna take to really do, do that work. So, it kind of hits on some of the other recommendations, but, you know, the time to truly train people on this. So, lucky to have kids that have gone to schools that have implemented restorative practices, so firm believer that it's the good thing. So, making sure that the rest of the community understands that as well. So, again, I thought there was a lot of great stuff in there, so for the, for the group to put that together, kudos to that. But again, initial reaction was that it seemed like it was a lot, but it's very critical that it's all there.
Director Tominski, thank you so much. I really wish I could like record you saying initially, "It seems like there's a lot," but it's all important. Thank you so much. Okay, all right, well, good, good. So, who do we have here at recommend, is that also you? Okay, all right. So, who do we have here that's going to read out here? Is there anything?
All right, thank you. So, oh, this is recommendation two. Okay, all right, I was just writing down this. All right, so, not sure which ones are ours. Develop a restoration and discipline matrix along with the guidance for how to reduce disproportionality and use professional judgment. So, I think this was our writing, right? Okay. So, yeah, there was a lot here. We, we wanted to kind of understand, like, when we talk about this matrix, you know, what does that look like across the board? As we were talking about this coherence across the district, you know, what does that look like at each level? You know, is it, it seems like there is some considerations for elementary, middle, and high. You know, what does that learning look like? So, this, and what is the timeline associated? So, is this, you know, a pretty quick process for this design and development, and then implementation happens pretty quickly? You know, when talking about like the background information, we also said it's pretty meaty. There's a lot to take in here, but, you know, what does this look like? How does it play out? What are some other considerations we need? And how to be consistent with the implementation? So, we have this matrix, but, you know, how are we actually in the classroom day-to-day ensuring that people are utilizing this in the appropriate way? And what does that look like, you know, before an incident may occur or after, and how are we handling that at each stage in that process to make sure that we are across the board, again, cohesive? And then, let's see, is the recommendation at the right green size? Okay. Yes, don't try to do it all three at first. So, is this just about behaviors? Does it address all relationships? Oh, yeah. So, we, we talked a lot about, you know, we talk a lot about students, but the way teachers and educators and administrators are feeling in a building and kind of the energy in that building also matters, and that trickles down to the students and the way that they're behaving. So, we want to also consider, you know, is this designed just for a certain relationship? Or is it student to student, student to staff, staff to staff as well? So, how are we using it at each level?
Thank you, Director Bais. Certainly appreciate your observations and insights here. Moving along to the next set of three, four, and five, and we've got Cersei Stumbo presenting on those.
Well, very quickly, and we only did three and four, so if another group wants to share on five that we didn't get to get to. Basically, many of the things that was said over in the other groups, conversations similar here. I think a big key is this question of what does it mean to be coherent? And who are we talking about? Like, are we talking about this whole safe and secure learning environment? New set of things that we're putting on top of it? And how do we make sure that instead it's actually implemented throughout everything else? And what does that practically look like? We know that a lot of the, the programs and initiatives already recognize that you've got to have a safe and secure learning environment in order to do X, Y, Z. So, are we using the same language? Are we really thinking about the same kinds of strategies and tactics and those kinds of things? And how do we support one another in what's already happening? So, we're not just adding more to the plate, which is a lovely set of questions and a very complex set of ways you can ensure that. And so, the, the idea of coherence and professional learning very much fit with each other. The grain size question is just really, what does it look like? These were the most theoretical, ephemeral, ethereal kinds of recommendations. And so, there was a bit of a sense we need to be a little more practical in what it, what it looks like when you play it out.
I believe that is it for the report out in the room, not mistaken. All right, thank you. So...
All right, well, thank you. We knew this would take a long time because it is a lot, and we appreciate, we hoped that at minimum, you got introduced to the ideas, to the recommendations, to the materials and the background so that you can dig in and get back to the Safety Advisory Council with, so where should the Safety Advisory Council go next? They are meeting again August fourteenth, so these last few minutes, just, they wanted to turn it over to you to say, now that you've talked individually, now what do you think as you're looking overall? What, what direction do you want to give the council for their next step so that they can come back to you with something tighter and cleaner and more responsive?
Do, do we have any, like, immediate questions or additional reaction from the board members at this time? This is your first introduction, and we'll talk about how you can continue to give us some feedback as we move forward before we come back in August.
So, we discussed this, and, and thanks for being so receptive. You know, this is a data-driven decision board, so we just need to be, like...
So, we just need to be, like, if I would, as a board member, prefer to have some really clear measures and a reporting schedule on those, so that we can, um, see whether or not it's effective, or something needs to be shifted.
Thank you for all your hard work that you did to put this together, but I will say, uh, one of the things that was a theme across the sections as the recommendations, is simplify. It just feels like a lot. They're very good recommendations. I'm not saying that they're not, but it's just, you know, to simplify. And one of the comments that were made, uh, that I agree with is to make sure it doesn't feel like one more thing to the people who have to put these recommendations into action. Because then, that, that's when we're gonna experience a breakdown in that. And we really need to do something pretty quickly to get something in place, but simplify. If I can just get that word in your head with that. All right?
Just kinda building on that, with that simplify, I think, you know, maybe, and it is a lot, it is a lot, but maybe phase it out. It's, it, yeah, I think, I think that sometimes you give people so much at one time, they tune out, because it's too much.
I was just trying to get a sense, and I think we noted this somewhere, that, um, so I see all the people that were involved, principals, elementary school, you know, teachers, uh, eleven community members, and then I know, uh, the hundred students conducted by the National Association of Secondary Principals. So, just considering at a local level, how are we having ongoing time and space with kids to, with the students that are actually there and feeling, um, all of these things? What are they saying? Can we find, um, safe and welcoming spaces to not only allow time for questions, um, so they feel like they, you know, are valued in, in that way? And also, uh, they might have some really great ideas that we should consider, that there's, it's an ever-changing landscape. So, um, would love to just, uh, toss that out, out there as well. Um, and then I would just say, you know, I, as we know, I just feel like these behavioral problems, um, as I was mentioning, it's sort of this, it's a cry for help if a child is behaving in certain ways, right? And so, um, it requires certain attention, so things that I might be in here, but I'm not sure, is just how are we providing that support in schools for, um, you know, that regulation emotionally throughout the school day? Is there, you know, are there counselors, therapists? What does that look like? Is that here in this model? But how are kids kind of reaching goals that they're setting and, and advancing in that way? So that they have a plan in the classroom? And I'm just curious where that falls, so maybe once I digest. Um, and then the last thing I will say is, because it's evidence-based, I just, um, was hoping maybe there would be something about, uh, the increase in screen time and, uh, teachers trying to teach while kids are scrolling through TikTok. And, um, you know, I feel a little anxious after I'm on social media. So, I just feel like if we're mentioning social media, what are some cellphone policies we're considering? Because we not only have lost learning time, but it is, you know, the things we know, bullying, other things that when there is a tragedy and people are, um, communicating different things, that just heightens, uh, everything and also impedes, you know, our responses. So, um, just considering cellphone in schools.
Second that, it's another discussion, though. Um, two things, I wanna reiterate what Marcy said, and I told the story when we were working on, I think, number two over there. Um, at my company, we came up with ten company values, and after a year, nobody could remember them. We consolidated them to four. Everybody knows them. I think a lot of these could be consolidated with lots of context under them, but that would be one way to do it. Um, and then, I don't see any mention of law enforcement or our partners with CRPD in here. And, um, I don't know if they were interviewed at all, or if we talked to them at all. Um, but if they were not, I think that that's amiss.
One of the things I truly appreciate is this packet that allows me to take the time to read through and to have a better understanding. And I think within our group, and we looked at everything that has been, is being put in place. I don't want our teachers to be overwhelmed with another initiative, and I hear that. So, that's one more thing put on their plate. This is needed. We, we need it. But we've gotta find a better balance, because my concern is our teachers. This is, it's something new, and it's added to their plate. It, it is needed. But maybe we need to step back to and look what can be taken off of the plate, too. Because we want this to be quality and not hat-bait, or people just going through the motion. Because then we don't accomplish anything at all. See, I, I was gonna support you with that. I just wanna say one thing, uh, because we, we have a, um, a change management group, uh, task force that's working right now. It's like how we go about change within our school district, and we're gonna be bringing it forward. We have about ten, um, people on that group. But one of the things we talked about today was actually that, that if we bring forward an initiative, then what is it going to replace? What comes off? And so, how do you build that within a change management process? So, for the recording, and for our administrators that are gonna be watching the recording, let's make sure that we do continue to discuss that within our change management, uh, process that we're looking to adopt in the district.
I just wanna thank all the volunteers that put in so much time for this. Um, yeah. As a board member, I'll tell you, sometimes when you walk in, you see a full boardroom, you don't know exactly what's about to happen. So, I appreciate that you're all here because of the hard work that you put in. Uh, this board's been asking for a comprehensive behavior management plan for a long time. Um, so this work is a huge part of that. Um, and I, and again, like, I think the, the initial reaction is, there's so much here, but there's a reason why there's so much here. Um, so, I guess I would say here for me, like, simplify and make it digestible, but be careful of what we take out. Um, because I don't, I haven't seen anything that I would wanna remove. Um, so I think it's important that the stuff that's here is here, and I think you guys all know that. Um, so I would challenge us to just be ready, uh, to take on heavy work, because that's exactly what this is. Um, the rollout is gonna be really important, so we spent a lot of time talking about that. The communication plan up and down, making sure that we're not just, uh, telling people that we wanna hear from them, but that we're actually listening and, um, showing that they're heard. Um, I appreciate, I know the interview process, I think you mentioned there was a hundred and sixty-eight people that participated in that. So, quite a few people, uh, from the community, um, that, that were involved in this work. So, I just wanna say thank you for that. Um, this has been really, uh, really impactful work. Thank you.
I think you're hearing some common themes here about respecting our staff time, not putting one more thing on their plate. We, we are a data-driven board, so data, 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 um, everything you can do there. I, as I walked around to the various, uh, stations, I just kept thinking, if only we had more time, and if only we had more staff, we could do this. So, I know that's, that's like an impossible problem to solve for you guys, but, like, I think it's all doable if we roll it out slowly enough for people to get on board. As a teacher, I know every year you go back to school, and it's like, oh, my gosh, what's gonna be new this year? And always the conversation is, what are they taking off our plate? And the, and the answer is nothing. It's always just one more thing. So, I appreciate that you're aware of that, and we'll, we'll do what you can to avoid that. Other comments, questions? Thank you, Cersei, Angel, Chad. We appreciate all the work that you and the rest of your group have done. I think we all have some reading to do. Maybe not tonight, but sometime soon. So, we appreciate all your efforts. With no further business, do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned at eight-eleven.